Recording in progress.
Yeah, and the colored pink guys too. What's going on today? Lisa's got pink, Carolyn's got pink.
With the pink shirts. It's a boy band.
Recording in progress.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, I think we're gonna get started. Everybody, welcome to our May twenty second, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting. We're glad you're here. Now that I've called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Present.
Counselor Long.
Present.
Counselor Randall.
Present.
Counselor Richardson.
Present.
Counselor Runyon absent, and Mayor Mays.
Present. Item three is pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask Counselor Dan Richardson to please lead us in the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Richardson. Item four is approval of the agenda. We do have one amendment to the agenda. Item ten A is not going to be discussed tonight, which had to do with the city hall council, council chambers renovations, and that will be discussed next month.
Hello.
So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Randall and seconded by Counselor Richardson to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five is presentations and proclamations. We have a very special presentation to make tonight to a lady that's sitting in the back row. If she would please come forward, her name is Mary Davis, and because Okay, I think we're gonna get started, everybody. Buddy, welcome. To our council meeting. Now that I've called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Runyon absent, and Mayor Mays.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Although they may not know her name. The agenda, we do have one amendment to the is not going to be discussed tonight, which had to do with the city hall council, council chambers renovations, and that will be discussed. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Can I buy new discussion? All those in favor? Please say aye or raise your item. We have a very special presentation to make tonight to a lady that's sitting in the back row. If she would please come forward, her name is Mary Davis. Is her? Okay, I think we're gonna get started, everybody. That I've called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask the city clerk to please call.
Counselor McLaughlin. Well, the idea of promoting the history of the DOWS in an offbeat way may have started with me, but those characters who agreed to go on the adventure with me are the ones who deserve the recognition. Pioneer ladies, brothel inspectors, floozies, flappers, sheriffs, gold miners, cowboys, and the Chinese worshiper woman. Are just some of the historical people who are made more history come alive. This is for them. There is a saying, if you have it. Well, the DOWS has it.
Second.
The floozies have been flaunting it. The DOWS is aged to perfection.
Item.
The gals from the DOWS may be overaged to perfection. But they are going to continue to keep the spirit of history alive. So thank you. I love my hometown, and it's been wonderful working with everyone. I may be back.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Well, the idea of promoting.
We hope you do come back, Mary. By the way, there is an election coming up in three years for city council.
Deserve the recognition.
Also, I'd like to ask your colleagues, I'm not sure everybody really saw them. So could you please stand up? The people that she recognized in the back, there we are.
Come alive. This is for them. The DOWS has have been flaunting it. The DOWS is aged to perfection. The DOWS may be.
Very special presentation. Okay. Okay, thank you again. Okay. Item five B is link transportation update. Jesus Mendoza and Sarah Cook from McCad are here. Come on forward. Please introduce yourselves and your titles. We know you work for McCad. I'm not sure, everybody. Thank you for being here. There we are. Think you can follow that tough act?
For them. The DOWS has have been flaunting it. The DOWS is aged to.
Mr. Mendoza, could you talk into the microphone?
Accompanied with me is Sarah Cook, who is a travel trainer for the link and CAT Columbia Transit. And we wanted to provide some updates on the.
Item five B is link transportation update. Cook from McCad are here. Come on forward. Please introduce yourselves and your titles. We know you work for McCad. I'm not sure. Mr. Mendoza, could you talk into the microphone?
Accompanied with me is Sarah Cook, who is a travel trainer for the link and CAT. We want to provide some updates on the.
Item five B is link transportation update. Cook from. Please introduce yourselves and your. Think you can follow that tough act?
As a travel trainer. Increasing the number of stops within the DOWS. Increasing our stops in densely populated areas and near medical facilities and recreational areas. What we've done this year was increased our service from eight stops to nineteen stops in the four hours. We are targeting neighborhood areas such as Chinatown with Rim Apartments, increasing. We are going down Ten Street as well, going up Scenic Drive, which is Chinatown with Rim Apartments. And then down to the hospital. We're also looking back to go towards downtown, so we're making a stop in front of the automotive shop on East Second. And looping back around. Previously, we are a red route wasn't going west out of town. We were just servicing the east side of town. So now we're focusing on trying to get clients here on the west side so they can connect with Mount. Transportation. They can also connect with Columbia Transit. West of town, we purchased Greyhound tickets if necessary. Then on the next page, we'll see the red routes. So we've done the same thing with the red route. So we've increased our service from nine to twenty-one stops. We're stopping at Foley Lakes, West Village, and Sunrise Apartments. We also have a stop at Safeway in Goodwill. And then again, that's heading towards westbound, so they can connect with other transportation providers as well and reduce the amount of time that they spend on the link vehicles. So the idea was to improve efficiency in the routes. The shelters will be installed at One Community Health and Mid Columbia Center for Living. One will go at Foley Lakes, another will go at Waters Edge Medical Center, and the fourth location is still pending approval, but we're aiming to install that at the seven hundred East Union Building, a state building, so it can serve individuals who need to the DHS office or work source area. It also serves us as a local central point, so they can walk down to the courthouse, the city hall areas in the downtown area. So the semis seats, we purchased twenty semis seats. We're aiming to install ten on the red route, ten on the blue route. Some locations that were identified were Sunflower and Lockwood, West Village Apartments, Pasket Square, downtown areas, Second and Taylor Auto Zone, and the Dallas High School. So we are proposing to change fares. So on the fixed route, we're aiming to decrease from a dollar fifty to a dollar. The dollar ride service will increase from a dollar fifty to two dollars for all one-way rights within the city limits of the DOWS. And the change is set to go into effect May twenty-nine. The change in price is in connection with the regional transit providers and trying to establish a more consistent regional transit system and having the same price for all of those who travel through the region. Individuals will be able to continue to purchase the gorge pass. So the gorge pass is a forty-dollar pass that is valid for a whole year, and they can ride unlimited on all the fixed routes, including regional providers. The price is forty dollars for adults, twenty for kids, and for individuals who need assistance with dollar ride tickets, we'll continue to support them through the gorge transit connect program where we offer reduced passes and free tickets for individuals who need assistance. The next page will, you can oversee the ridership information. So for, this is for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Total passengers for Q one service data was five thousand five hundred and thirty-two passengers, one-way trips, elderly and disabled trips, two thousand one hundred and thirty-three. Revenue service hours, three thousand five hundred and fifty. Revenue service miles, forty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-four. For Q two, we had total passenger one-way trips, four thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven. Elderly one-way trips, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight. Revenue service hours, three thousand one hundred and thirty-three. Revenue service miles, thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-nine. For the most recent quarter, we, the last quarter, we had total passenger one-way trips, four thousand one hundred and seventy-two. Elderly one-way trips, one thousand one hundred and eighty-three, and revenue service hours, three thousand four hundred and forty-nine. Thirty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-six, eight hundred, thirty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-six service miles. You will see that from Q one, we had a decrease in service miles and hours. That was because we were contracting with Columbia Area Transit to operate the intercity shuttle, so that deducted our mileage and service hours. Service miles was about between ten and twelve thousand miles per quarter, and we, so that's kind of why the difference in numbers there. We are looking to take back over the intercity shuttle beginning July first. We should see those numbers pick up again on the deviated fixed route. But I think for the for the DOWS and this purpose, you can see that the fixed route service and ridership level is pretty consistent within the DOWS itself. And before I handed it up, I handed it over to Sarah. I just want to express gratitude and say thank you to the city of the DOWS. The annual contribution that the city makes helps us leverage federal and state dollars and allows us to continue dollar ride operations and serving individuals who are elderly and disabled. And the city of the DOWS also providing the service, the public work service, assisting with the bus shelter, identifying the bus shelter locations, and just supporting with the installation, demolition, and all the work that David and his crew and Dale support the link transportation. And also just the community in general for promoting our partners, promoting the service, and just guiding individuals to the link so we can provide a service for those who need it.
Hi, my name is Sarah Cook. I work for McCad in the public transportation. I work closely with Jesus. My title is travel trainer, and the first question I always get asked is, what is a travel trainer? So in the most generic term, a travel trainer is a person who works with older adults and people with disabilities to get them to ride public transit independently. Now, my job title has expanded here in the gorge to veterans, Native Americans, the Latin community, and just general public who want to learn how to ride our public transportation. You reach out to me, I can give you general knowledge and guided tours, trip advice, just general help. One of my main responsibilities is the program, manage the gorge transit connect program, which Jesus had mentioned. We have our free and discount fare program through. I work with over thirty social service organizations in Wasco and in Hood River Counties. One Community Health, Columbia Gorge College. Right before I came here, I released fifteen free passes and fare books to One Community Health and Haven here in town, making those available for their clients. To be qualified to work, to get this discount fare program, which we created through this program, you have to work directly with me. And we request that you become a resource for your organization, your coworkers and your clients, and provide us with data stories about how the gorge pass and transit training has helped. We use that data to, of course, make more grants, to make more money to help fund the program. So then also part of that gorge transit connect program is a side program, which is the Go Vets Columbia Gorge Program, which was started through a grant through the Rural Transportation Program. And basically is a grant where I go out through Wasco and Hood River County and provide free gorge passes and medical ride shuttles to veterans that the only qualifying factor is that you say you're a veteran. In exchange, I just ask a few informational questions, and we use, of course, that data to further more grants. I have been working with the VSO here in the DOWS, Russell. I have gone to the DOWS coffee they have on the second Tuesday. I've been to a few advisory, the Veterans Advisory Board meetings, and hoping to put in an application there to work closer with Russell. And then also, I just made a connection with WorkSource Organ and giving them the information to work with their vets. Part of this veterans grant is decided in how we get the transportation to veterans, and they asked to have some veterans passes on hand because they explained the difficulty of, we've got them there. So it's difficult to bring them back in to give them the pass. So can we have the passes? Word of honor, we will fill out the form, and so little steps like that and working on how we can get that information and serve the veterans, because the goal is to serve the veterans and get them their, the transportation help they need. So I only know a few minutes, so I'm just going to cover those things. The next slide is about a lot of the outreach that I've done. So I'm not going to go into detail, but just an overview of the last eighteen months and a lot of the engagement and one-on-one work I've done. I have actually, in the last couple of months, I've had quite a few folks that are in Special Olympics reaching out to me because the activities are starting up in the summer times. They're trying to figure out how they can get to their activities. A lot of them have been moved to Hood River. So working one-on-one with each individual on making that transit work for them, because each of their disabilities is different. So yeah, it's a pretty exciting job, and I'm having a lot of fun. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mendoza or Ms. Cook?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. So two years ago, I purchased the forty-dollar pass, and I used it for a couple of months. I tried to use it exclusively just to see what it would be like to be someone in the DOWS who didn't have a car, and it was very challenging, but I can see with the added stops and some of the additional things, the travel trainer, that a lot of the issues that even I had trying to figure it out at first, and things that made it intimidating are certainly going to be much easier for people now, and I'm really excited to see that you have so many stops. I would get off and walk a long way, and I thought, what if people can't really walk this far? But I know there was dial-a-ride, but a lot of people just don't understand that when they look at the website or they hear about transit. So anyway, good job.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you all very much for coming, and we look forward to a future update from you guys. Okay, thank you. Item five C is FEMA proposed floodplain map update, and we have with us tonight Mr. Ted Perkins. He's come to us from the FEMA office up in Linwood, Washington. Welcome, sir. Great. Please don't be afraid to use a microphone. Get it right up there. Thank you for coming.
So can you, are you picking me up? All right, or a little closer? Okay, so yeah, I'm Ted Perkins. I'm an engineer for FEMA, and so what I do is I help oversee the flood maps we produce for the National Flood Insurance Program. So your community participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, and I'll talk a little bit about that. Maybe Lisa, if you can.
Hey, my name is Lisa Dare. I am an outreach and engagement specialist with Resilience Action Partners. We're a contractor with FEMA. We primarily work with community engagement and communications. So we've been working with your local community to plan several public outreach events that we'll talk a little bit about during Ted's presentation.
And I apologize, I don't see this. Is there ability to share screen? I got it. All right, thank you. So so FEMA produces flood maps across the nation because flooding is the most costly and deadly natural hazard that we have in the United States, and it's also pretty predictable. And so back in the late sixties, but what we saw nationally, so FEMA Federal Emergency Management Agency, we're trying to respond to disasters, kind of make, and what we, and ultimately what this is trying to do is reduce disaster, let people know where the disasters could occur, so they can actually minimize their exposure to that. And so back in the late sixties, they started this National Flood Insurance Program to create flood maps, so people knew where the risk was, and if communities were willing to regulate, keep themselves, to minimize their exposure to that risk, then the federal government would make flood insurance available to those communities. And so we first started doing that with the DOWS back in nineteen eighty-four was our first map, and a lot of things have changed since then. So we have a lot better technology, we have a lot better data, and we have a lot more years of record to be able to better understand how flooding occurs. And so it's, so we're basically tasked across the nation to update one and a half million miles of stream, and so that's taken a lot of time as we go across the country. But what we're doing right now is we're updating all of Wasco County, and so that's flood insurance, seventy flood insurance rate map panels, but one flood insurance study that kind of speaks to all the risks that are out there. So there's two levels of analysis we do in, because we're doing that one and a half million miles a stream, it's impossible for us to walk every mile. But in any areas where we have more urban areas around streams, then we do walk those streams, and we survey them to make sure we have very accurate information. And so that's what all those detailed streams that are listed, Rock Creek, Mill Creek, Three Mile Creek, Tenement Creek, all those ones, we've walked and surveyed to get, make sure we got it. Have a very good depiction of that risk. But with that, we also have very good detailed topography from LIDAR, which is where we fly these airplanes, and they shoot thousands of pulses to get what the, what the ground looked like, and this is what we did not have at all thirty years ago. And so we're still able to capture the other three hundred and twenty miles of stream in your county to better reflect what that risk is on all those streams. In addition, we worked with the Corps of Engineers who updated their understanding of what that flood risk is, and the flood risk we look at is the one percent chance flood event. You've often heard the term a hundred-year flood, got a one percent probability of occurring in any given year. So on average, it'll happen once in a hundred years, but sometimes you see them several short period of time, then none for a long period of time, and so but that's, that's how we're doing it. So you don't see these floods very often, but when you look at it nationally, so one and a half million miles of stream, that still means fifteen thousand miles across the United States are seeing that type of flood or larger every year. So that's basically how they decided to kind of manage the risk nationally. So that's, so the flood maps are used to help identify the risk, show you how high the water gets in different places and and where the water goes. It also helps to provide a basis for rating flood insurance. So actually, back in the sixties, one of the reasons why the federal government got involved in flood insurance was that none of the lenders really wanted to take a risk on it because they didn't know what that risk was. So that's why we developed the maps to be able to understand the risk, and so we could actually rate the risk. It's also used by a whole bunch of other people as well. So like your emergency managers are going to use this information to when, when a flood does occur, they need to know where to go. Where's the problem? When when a flood does occur, they need to know where to go, where's the problem's going to be. So there's a, there's a variety of people who have actually used these flood maps. So I mentioned the National Flood Insurance Program and again, that was started in the late sixties and. The the whole idea is to reduce uh, disaster costs, so basically before a disaster occurs. Getting communities to understand where that that risk is and then be able to do something about it and so. Uh, your community has regulations to basically. Reduce that exposure by. If there, if someone is going to build in the floodplain, then they have to build above that flood elevation to kind of make sure they're safe. But they also look at uh, the the building practices to try and encourage people to not build in flood for possible. Um. And uh, and so again, part, part of the. Program is if if you are willing to set these minimum floodplain construction standards, then. Then the federal government makes that flood insurance available and so your community has. Made that decision to do that as many communities have across the country. There's several reasons for that, one is also there is a lending requirement by the national lenders. Uh, to have flood insurance if you are built in the floodplain and so. Uh, so that added hook really, where people want to get. Uh, in the program so they can get flood insurance, there is private insurance, but it doesn't, it's harder to get. In the national. Uh, so on the, on the left side there, you can see. The old, th- these are the effective maps that you are currently using. These are dated and they are paper maps and so. Trying to orient yourself if the roads have changed or moved uh, is more challenging and so what we're moving to is more of a digital product. Where uh, you can actually. Bring in all your different layers, you can bring your orthophoto layers, you can bring your parcel layers and you can really better understand exactly where that flood lies. On on your, on different parcels and structures and you give better advice on. How and where to build. So as part of doing any of these updates, there are changes. And there's always some that are. Are going to be added and some people who are going to have it removed and so a lot of that's related to. Where we we basically were able to figure out what the ground is a lot better than we did back uh, in the early eighties. And uh, so. Uh, for the city of the DOWS, you can see in the in the bottom chart. Uh, there is actually twenty-five. Structures being removed and a hundred and three being added, so there is a net add. Of people into the hundred-year floodplain part of this. Um, and so. Uh, this is part of why we're going to actually talk about the outreach we want to do, these are, these maps are only preliminary at this. So there is an ability to comment or appeal on these maps to try and make change, talk about that. Uh, so we've been going through uh, actually a long process uh, with with these maps, I think we probably started. Maybe twenty fifteen or so uh, when we first met with. But we first were able to show graph maps uh. In twenty twenty and so that's where we showed. Just the community staff, hey, this is what it's starting to look like, we haven't done all the quality review checks and all that on it. Uh, and and just tried to get feedback there to see if there's any adjustments we need. Uh, after that, we kind of. Uh, did make, made some adjustments uh, and then issued. Back in October, what we call preliminary maps and that's where the maps are actually available to. Uh, to look at. So then we held a meeting in January, talked to your uh, community staff about what, what do you need to do for outreach and how can we support? That, so your constituents know uh, that these flood maps are out there and if they're affected by any of these changes. Uh, how are they affected? What can they do about it? Uh, if they disagree with it, again, I'll talk about uh, the appeal period, which uh, will start. Probably late this summer and it's a ninety-day appeal period, uh, so it'll go till fall, uh, this fall. And once, but once we get all that, then we will uh. Solve those comments and appeals. So we get a a final product which we. Our letter of final determination, that's where we say, okay, we've heard all the comments and appeals, we've tried to address them. Uh, best way possible, uh. And then communities then have six months to update their ordinances to reflect uh, the change in their understanding. Um, so. So in, so as part of the outreach, there's, there's kind of a two-tier approach, uh. So in the past, it was pretty much all public meetings, we'd come out and we would support, we'd bring. People, uh, flood insurance experts, the engineers who did the study, uh, and and we are planning on doing all that, uh, and actually we're going to be. In uh, the DOWS on uh, tomorrow night and and we're gonna do South Wasco County. Uh, Wednesday night and that'll be in Wamak. Uh, so and that's, that's what Lisa's been. Working hard on setting up uh, with your community staff, making sure they have all the resources to help. Get the outreach done to make sure uh, everybody. Is aware that we're doing this and that they can come and and get their questions answered. But as, as COVID happened, uh, we we had a really tough time doing. Public outreach and so we kind of switched to a virtual story map and that's. Basically trying to mimic. What we do at the, at the open houses, so at the open houses, you have a table, again, you you first kind of go and you get a map of your property. Uh, and show you what it looked like, what it looks like now and the effective and then what it's going to look like in the preliminary. Then you can kind of go around to like the insurance table and ask, how is this going to affect me insurance-wise? But it, what do I need? Do I need, is there a way I can get the best insurance rate? Uh, you can go to the floodplain management table and understand. How is this going to change what I might want to build on my property? Uh, and uh, or what elevation that I have to build to, the types of things. Uh, and. There's. Five tables, uh, anyway, I I think we'll all show a list of these in a minute, but. This, this site uh, is also going to have that same format. Uh, in a story map and there's things that you can click on up at the top, it's basically like going to each table. There's still contacts at each one of these things, get your, get your own map. To answer, uh, get somebody to answer questions about insurance, that's going to be up throughout the whole. So, so even if someone misses the public meeting the next couple of days, there'll still be an ability. To ask questions about or get a, get their map and understand how it changes for them and also how they might get. So uh, the story map, uh, it, these are the things actually I just was talking about. Uh, you can, you can download a personalized map or or you can email us and we will create one for you. There's uh, there's a flood study engineering tab and again, we'll have a. Let's study engineering table at these public meetings where the engineers that did the study will be there. Uh, and so if there are things like, hey, I don't understand how you got water in this one spot. Engineers can sit there and kind of pull up their models, they can talk you through. What it is that caused that water to get there and then they also can talk about what might, what information. Might you provide if you actually think that that information is not correct? So let's say you're up on a bit of a bluff. Somehow our models didn't pick up on, most of our LIDAR and topography really good nowadays, but. It still can miss sometimes, sometimes maybe it hit a tree or something like that and didn't capture something quite right. So if you had survey of your property, you could submit that kind of. We could take a look at it and make a change. And so there's two levels of comments or appeal, what we call it comments or appeals. Appeal is a very strict standard that FEMA has, which is. If you don't like what we have, you have to show what we did wrong and you have to buy models. Updated better information. If you do that, then yes, we're going to address that and not only that, if you don't like our answer, you can even go to a. Review board that's outside of FEMA. Uh. Uh, just to make sure it's objective. But but short of that. Again, we don't, we don't get around to updating these maps very often, so we want to get it right. You know, so we want this to be a map that really works for you long-term and so. What we also are looking for are comments. Kind of the canary in the coal mine, what what is it you don't think that looks right and then. Work with us, our engineers to kind of identify maybe what what technical information you can submit. It might help you, so again, that survey. Or if you, if you knew how high the the water got on a particular flood and we were able to. Figure out, you know, how that relates to the one percent event, we might be able to make an adjustment. Um, so that, those are the kind of things that uh, someone could comment or appear. Um, and again, we'll also have staff to talk through insurance and. So uh, Lisa's been working with your staff, uh, building these. Things that that go out, th- these are going to be the handouts at the uh, at the open houses. They kind of tell you what the tables are, you know, so you have the property ID, the flood insurance table, the flood study table, so you know. Now, if you want to go and talk to that group, what what kind of questions you can get answered. Um, some of this information I think also got sent out to. Uh, all those affected about coming to the public. So some of the things. Have and and again, these, these are the tables that are actually going to be at the. House, which I kind of talked through already, uh, but those are the key contacts of. I'll, I'll be there as the presenter and I also kind of oversee the flood study engineering, Sonia. Is the one who, crew actually did the, the work. So again, we we've been planning this open house, but again, tho- those are the next couple of days, uh, we've been. Helping as much as we can with uh, supporting your. Communities uh, on the outreach. I spoke to the. That's. The uh, the overview I just, and I appreciate your time just to kind of. Wanted to just get the word out as much as possible and I thought this was one more venue to. That people know that we're in town and we're really uh, wanting to talk to people.
Right, thank you very much. Questions for these two? Counselor Long?
Um, so when and where are the open houses?
Uh, so the first one, if you want to.
Yeah, this is Lisa Dare again, just for the record, um, so the first open house is going to be tomorrow at the DOWS High School. And that's going to be from five thirty to seven thirty and then we'll be down in Wamak um, at the community center there. On Wednesday and that one will also be five thirty to seven thirty. Um, and just to plug too, um, Ted will be giving a presentation towards the beginning of that public open house event. That'll be at about five forty-five um, at both of those public open houses. The open house, the presentation that'll be at the open house tomorrow with the DOWS is also being streamed online. So if there's individuals who aren't able to attend in person, they can also watch that presentation online and they'll have a chance to ask questions to Ted then as well.
And um, where, where online?
There's a Zoom link, so the um, virtual resource that we showed the story map, there's a Zoom link up there. And then I believe it's also been posted on the city's website as well.
Okay, great, the website's probably easy, okay. And then um, I had a couple of questions on the slide, it was pers- purpose of the NFIP. Um, it said that it um, it may reduce the dependency on structural flood control. I don't understand what that means in plain English.
Yeah, so uh, when, when the National Flood Insurance Program uh, was enacted, which was the late sixties. It it followed a period uh, in the US where we built a lot of dams and a lot of levees. And that still wasn't fixing our flooding problem, uh, so levees work up to a point, then they don't. And and so sometimes we were seeing. Worse disasters from those flood events that got bigger and then overtoped and then uh, and then the water couldn't get out. So. The, this is kind of what we call a non-structural type of solution, which is getting people to try and. Outside of the floodplain or if you're going to build in, build high enough. That you know, even if the water does get on the other side of a levee. That you're above that flood elevation and that you're not going to see.
Prevention?
Yes.
Uh, okay, um, all right, so then that's probably what the next thing it means to because promotes floodplain management practices that increase resiliency. Basically, don't build where you're going to get flooded out.
Don't build or if you have to, then there are ways to build that you can handle those. Forces, um, and and so we have. guidance on on how to build in the different flood type zones that we have.
Okay, and then my last question, um, you were talking about the appeals process and that. Um, that there were steps to go through and is, is that as um, challenging for the homeowner and as. Costly as it sounds?
So again, the official appeal is, is you have to actually basically be an engineer to refute. Engineering we have, but again, one of the reasons why we have an engineering table here is to talk to the layperson about. How, how the flooding got to where it was, they can talk about the uh. The details and. And even, and I even encourage them, if if someone points out something that just. Looked quite right and even to, even to you as the engineer, like. Sometimes when we do these things on a larger scale, we miss something else scale. So it's worth bringing it up and it's worth talking it through with the engineer and we can try and help. But if. One of the challenges we do have is a lot of times people will be, will say, hey, I've lived here for thirty years, I've never seen flooding, I don't want to. I don't want to be in the floodplain, I shouldn't be in the flood. The problem is this is a one percent probability event, so I can't guarantee you would have seen it. Last thirty years, so there's nothing statistically I can actually change, so. And we have to have a model back. And so we ultimately have to have that or we can't defend it. You know, um. Through our process and so. So that's why we have to get, that's why I have the engineers talk to the people who. Think there are issues, uh, because they're the ones who are likely going to help. Make that change if it's there. All right, again, some of this is. The the risk is there and and there's going to be sometimes when. Someone's not happy about that and. Uh, we we have to talk through it, but we also want to talk through that as well, we want them to believe that. You didn't just make this up, that that there's actually data behind the decisions we're making and uh, and that there is a risk there. Uh, to try and address.
So based on the timeline that I saw, um, if someone made a comment and your engineer was looking into it, that um, there is not. It's kind of all due at the same time, both the comment but also the appeal. So someone's not going to know if your engineer had time to look at it and said, oh, yeah, we made a mistake.
Yeah, it. During that appeal period is when we want either comments or appeals, uh, and. We encourage. If you do have any heartburn about anything, to submit that, but but again, I, to be successful. It's worth talking to the engineer, frame it in the way. You might act, you might actually see a change. But it's not a simple process because again, we do put a lot of technical analysis behind it.
Mm-hmm.
But it, but we should be able to explain it to you well enough that you understand. Why we think that risk is there.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I have a few, um. A couple of follow-ups on what Counselor Long was asking about, on page nine, we have that table. That shows. A hundred and three people have been added or homes have been added to the area and. Twenty-five have been eliminated, taken out.
Yep.
So the twenty-five are probably pretty happy, right? Okay, and the hundred and three are going to be, what's this all about?
Right.
So they were given letters, mailed letters to advertise this public hearing tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Hi, this is Lisa Dare again for the record, I can speak to that a little bit more, um, so on our end. We've been working with your community to do outreach to these individuals, um, specifically with the Community Development Department, so Josh can probably speak to that a little bit better. Um, but we did provide um, mailers that could be sent out to individuals that were affected as well as flyers and then I know that there's also been Facebook posts that. And then I know that there's also been Facebook posts that have gone around as well. Um, but Josh can probably tell you a little bit more about the details about how those mailers were targeted to the individuals that are affected.
Thank you, Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. Uh, so, uh, while we were working on putting the information together for the outreach, Wasco County GIS put together, um, a list of all the properties that were impacted. And we used that list and targeted each of these properties, sending out an initial mailer, talking about what the process is. It was then followed up by a postcard that talked about, it was an invite for these, this meeting tonight, as well as tomorrow night. Um, and then yes, we posted to, uh, the Facebook page a couple of times. Uh, we have a website. We, we created a webpage on the city's website. Um, so there's quite a bit of information that's, that's slowly been updating. It says, we're getting closer and closer to the date. We're adding a little bit more information as we go. So.
Did you target the 103 or did you target the hundreds of others that are currently in the, there's no, there's no?
Yeah, there was just under 300 mailers that went out. Yeah. So everyone, if, if, if you are in, if you're now out, and then if there was no change and you're still within, um, then we sent, we sent to each one of them. And each of them had their own basically targeted mentioning, mentioning to them right on the top, you are now in the floodplain. You are now outside of the floodplain, letting them know what steps they need to do. So yeah, individual for each.
Thanks.
Yep.
Now, if somebody was to appeal, isn't it pretty much true that the reason they are appealing is because they're going to be paying a premium for flood insurance that they weren't paying before? Isn't that why people would appeal?
So yeah, well, I mean, the, the way the maps affect most is if you are added to the floodplain and you have a federally backed mortgage, then there will be an insurance requirement.
Okay. And that's, that's what would cause people to appeal is they're getting this premium they didn't have to pay before and obviously, and then you're going to answer, you can answer their questions at the public meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I, I have had people appeal because they thought our floodplanes weren't big enough. Uh, and I've even had people appeal on our 500-year floodplain, which isn't a regulatory thing, because they just want the risks to be captured correctly. So but more often than not, the, the appeals are coming from landowners that, uh, do not want to be added to the floodplain.
Right. Now, the insurance, FEMA doesn't actually give them the insurance, your contract with an insurance company that does all that. Is that?
If, the insurance is actually through FEMA, um, but it, it's a kind of a grayer area that they're not. Uh, insurance rates aren't set exactly to like, because we're doing this map update, whether you're in or out is defined by our flood maps. Whether you're paying a higher rate or a lower rate does not, so you're, you're not going to guess, you're not going to see a higher rate because you've been added to the floodplain, but you may have a requirement to get the insurance that you didn't have before.
Right. And in layman's terms, and I'm not sure you can do that, uh, maybe an engineer, what exactly would kick in, somebody, what would cause somebody to have to be in the floodplain area they weren't before? I mean, can you be more specific? I mean, does the water level have to reach a certain height? 1% of the time? Is that how that works?
Yeah. So, so there's, there's kind of three elements that change the maps. Uh, one is the topography. And that's usually the biggest change. And so what, what we didn't have 40 years ago was a real good topography set. And so if you find, if the water gets out of bank, it's going to go to those low spots. And we didn't pick up on that in a number of, in, in, I think two of the key places in the Dells, I think, though, we just didn't pick up on that in, in the old study.
In 1984.
Yeah. Um, but there's also a change. So we, we, there's thing we call hydrology and then there's hydraulics. So hydrology is how much water actually gets into the river. And so we measure that, uh, USGS does with gauges to figure out how much water goes by a, at a particular point, and they measure it over a number of years. And so we've had a lot more years of data. And from that, we, there has been a slight increase in what we consider the 1% probability flood, uh, from 40 years ago. So that's, that's another element. Then the final part is the hydraulics, which is you, you then create this physics-based model. It takes all this water and then routes it downstream and figures out how deep and how wide it gets. So that, uh, again, if you have really good topography, it better captures where the water is going to go. And so again, so some, in certain circumstances, uh, you could see like, you for had, uh, a huge reduction of plane. And so the water didn't, no longer went where we thought it was going to go. So, so those are the three main things that are usually changing your maps.
The topography part of it is the most significant though?
Usually, yeah. And I think, uh, on the, on the west side of the city of the Dallas, I think the topography really captured some low ground that really was missed.
So the topography didn't change. It was the, the, the technology that allowed us to discover that the technology or that the, the topography was susceptible of more flooding than before.
Yeah. I mean, basically the ground elevations were a lot cruder. And so if you take, you know, you take one point here, one paint point, uh, 500 feet away, and you're averaging your ground elevation, that's going to be a lot cruder than you do it like every foot. And that's, that's how we are able to capture all the little nuances of the ground and how the water can
I always thought that development, you know, like parking lot paving and buildings and runoff from that increases flooding more than what you're talking about, but that's not the case.
Well, no, that, that can be part of it. So, and that, so when we measure the flows in this, how much water gets into the channel, if, if there's been a lot more paving going on, then what you're going to see is an increase in how much water actually gets in. And so that increases what we call the hydrology.
Okay. Very interesting. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Good luck tomorrow. Thank you, Josh. Okay. Item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Up to five minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Upon being recognized by the chair, please state your name, spell it if necessary or appropriate, and state your, uh, your street address is optional, but we ask that you identify the community where you live. We've also added a feature tonight. We have a five-minute clock that you see on the screen to help you. What's that? It's not working. Well, maybe we don't have it tonight. Do you have it? Okay. So if you, if you're at the microphone, you can just look up and see how much time you have. It's a new invention that, uh, we discovered and we're, we're taking advantage of it tonight. Also relieves me of the pressure of having to keep the time. So with that, um, who would like to raise your hands? If be recognized, yes, ma'am, please come forward, state your name, where you live and speak into the microphone. Thank you for being here.
Sure. Uh, again, my name is Sally Carpenter. I, my address is P O Box 371 in the Dells. I spoke at your last meeting, uh, I did as well as my neighbors, uh, at that, pardon? Okay. Uh, at that time, I shared with you the various ongoing and unexpected problems that have arisen from the spread of short-term rental properties in our neighborhood that is zoned as low-density residential. Based upon your comments at the meeting, I need to ensure that you understand my reason for sharing these problems with you. My reason is to provide a basis for my request that the city take action by one, amending the city code and two, altering the allocation of city funds. My family did not sign up to live next to a Motel 6 or Holiday Inn. We chose to live in a low-density residential zone so as to avoid the traffic, noise, crime, and crowds found near transit lodging facilities. However, our neighborhood now has multiple transit lodging facilities that are marketed on internet sites such as Airbnb.com. Unlike a Holiday Inn, the transit lodging facilities, meaning the short-term rental properties in our neighborhood, have no discernible onsite manager to address promptly the concerns that inevitably arise, such as noise, trash, traffic, crime, parking, and crude behavior. Because the properties at issue are used to short-term rentals, the problems generated by these properties usually last for one to two days at a time before the renters vacate. That short duration means that by the time I were to contact the city's codes enforcement officer via email about a problem with a short-term rental and that officer were to respond to the incident location, which historically requires one or two business days, the renters who caused the specific problems would have already vacated. As a result, the instruction by your staff at the council's meeting on May 8th, that my neighbors and I submit our problems to the codes enforcement officer in writing would result in wasted time and resources. Although most of the short-term renters stay for a duration of one or two days at a time, there are distinct recurring problems that my neighbors and I have previously shared with you. The problems have not stopped and continue to infringe upon my ability to enjoy my own property peacefully. In a letter that I will submit to your clerk when I'm done, I have submitted, uh, examples, uh, photos that show the crowding and traffic problems in our neighborhood. And I've, uh, included captions describing what those photos show. The noise emanating from the short-term rental properties has become the most frequent problem. The public notice provision of City Code 8.02.090 is inadequate to address noise problems. The reasons are that City Code 8.02.090 only requires the city to provide notice to property owners within 100 feet of the short-term rental property. The sounds of screaming kids, raucous gatherings, hot tub cocktail parties and dance music always radiate more than 100 feet away. For a neighbor like me who lives more than 100 feet from the short-term rental party house at 300 West Scenic Drive, there's currently no requirement for the city to notify me about who operates the offending short-term rental. As a result, the stated purpose of City Code 8.02.090 fails each time I am subjected to the emanations of 300 West Scenic Drive. Bad actors have no difficulty in determining which properties are short-term rentals and whether those properties are vacant. The burglary last year of the short-term rental at 300 West Scenic Drive was the incident that prompted my own vigilance about property crimes in our neighborhood. I request you contact our police department to learn more about that specific incident. To protect our city's livability and deter criminals in our community, I request the council to take action by one, amending the city code and two, changing the allocation of city funds. Specifically, I respectfully request the council to, one, establish a minimum period of stay of 30 days in any short-term rental property cited in a low-density residential zone. In addition, set a max, a maximum number of total rental contracts that may be formed per year for any short-term rental property cited in a low-density residential zone. Two, require a person who owns or operates a short-term rental property cited in a low-density residential zone to reside on the premises being rented. Three, establish a limit for how many short-term rental licenses the city will grant per year in low-density residential zones. Maintain the licensing provisions of City Code 8.02.030. Establish a lottery to determine which licenses will be extended each year. Establish benchmarks which each property must meet before having its license renewed. Four, change short-term rentals from being an accessory use to being a conditional use within a low-density residential zone. Ensure the city notifies all neighbors within a half-mile radius about each conditional use application and subsequent hearing. Five, fund increased police patrols in neighborhoods with short-term rental properties. Increase the transit lodging tax to fund the increased police patrols. Six, amend City Code 8.02.090 to include mandatory notification to all neighbors, both property owners and long-term renters who live within at least 1,000 feet of a short-term rental property. Seven, evaluate making each of the above actions apply to all residential zones. Sincerely, Sarah E. Carpenter. And I'm giving a copy of this to your clerk right now.
Thank you. Could, could you, um, could you stay there in case there's any questions?
Yes, sir. Does, does the council have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Carpenter? I did, but go ahead.
I don't have any questions for Ms. Carpenter. I just, I want to reiterate, I believe from two weeks ago, we directed staff to, to look at this, to specifically look at number of STRs, location or distribution geographically, to look at our ordinance and to review these, this issue and how we might address it. I, I am I, am I correct in this?
Uh, yes, you are, counselor. Um, based on, uh, Mrs. Carpenter's comments last time, as well as other comments from the community.
Yep.
Um, other comments we've received via email since then, in the, the last couple of weeks or so, uh, I've touched base with our community development department and the director there to, uh, work on this item, to gather that requested, uh, information. Uh, to continue, to start and continue some of the research and some of the comparisons to other communities that we've uh, been looking at for best practices, uh, such as some of the suggestions we've received to date and bring that back to the council for discussion. Um, in the meantime, I wouldn't encourage you, as we did previously, to certainly contact codes, but also contact our police department as well, uh, to be as timely as possible and to deal with some of the, um, disruptive behavior that may be violating some of the codes and ordinances that we currently have on the books, uh, while we conduct that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, um, asked our city attorney today to contact a couple of cities that I know of. You've obviously done your homework. Can you tell us which cities you might have checked with to come up with the seven recommendations? So we can kind of match notes.
Some of my recommendations are based on my own analysis of the city code. Others, uh, were gleaned informally, uh, from the internet, specifically, uh, from Palm Springs, California, regarding, uh, the longer, uh, rental terms of 30 days. But I, I've not done in-depth analysis of say, how City of Hood River has done this or cities on the coast, which I know were mentioned perhaps at the last meeting. But I, I do believe a funding allocation needs, needs to happen to increase the patrols as well as really looking at the current, uh, codes that address short-term rentals and how desperately they really need to be amended.
I, uh, I'm familiar with most of your recommendations. I, I understand what you went, what you meant by each of them, except for the one about changing the allocations of the revenue. What does that mean?
Sure. So if, if, uh, the council's already budgeted a certain amount for the police department, uh, I'm asking that that be increased, uh, to support, uh, more patrols in neighborhoods that have short-term rentals.
Okay. I thought you tied it to the
Yes.
Hotel motel.
Yeah, yeah. To, so the short-term rentals.
Okay. I want to make sure I understand.
Yes.
You're, you're proposing increasing this, the lodging tax to pay for the, is that?
That's, okay. Yes, that is my proposal. There may be other sources of revenue, uh, for the council. Uh, but I, I, I don't know off the top of my head what those are.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else? Just a minute. Um, did you have anything else you want?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for coming. Yes, ma'am, you can come forward.
So is this song? Oh, yes. Okay. My name's Joyce Silvery. I live at 300 West 20th. I live right behind 300 Best Scenic Drive, the big party house. I've been at this address, my husband and I, for 20 years and we love it up there. However, in the last two years, it's gotten unlovely. Um, I also live next door to 301, no, 303 West 20th Street, which is now an Airbnb, which also has a garage, has been turned into a gaming room. And, um, that house can have six people. Scenic Drive House can have 12 people. And you read the, um, blurb on the Airbnb site. And then I live catty corners from the two other Airbnb houses. I think it's 318 and 322 Airbnb houses. I think it's three eighteen and three twenty two West twentieth Street. So I'm surrounded by short term rentals. Um, before I go on, but I think I saw you Sunday morning walking our neighborhood and thank you if that was you. Appreciate it. And thank you, Darcy, for answering my letter and I'm very glad I got to talk to Tim. Appreciate, appreciate that attention. I want to read a paragraph and you've probably read it. I think it's on the Airbnb website for the pool house, the big party house behind me. And that paragraph reads, our scenic area homes give guests an opportunity to do more than one home in the same neighborhood, all walking distances for larger gatherings, AKA parties. Um, please see our listings or inquire directly for more details. Um, well, I kind of wonder what these details are. So does that mean all these houses can have one group of people and they can kind of gravitate between the houses? And I suspect they all can go into pool house and go swimming. I think that's the big draw there. I also know that my other neighbor at two twenty a scenic driver's talking currently with the owners sell his home to the Airbnb people. So that'll be another house behind me. So like six people next door, twelve people on this scenic drive. And how many hat people are going to be at the two twenty residents of that sale goes through? And then how many people stay at three eighteen and three twenty two West twentieth? I mean, how many thirteen people are going to be in this little area? And there's some, um, guidelines or some um, laws that we can initiate to limit all of these people inhabiting our block on the weekends. Cause actually last two years I dread weekends. There's a big gathering at the pool house. People are yelling and having fun. I don't have problems with people having fun. Just would like less of it the weekends. And, um, so the other thing is I contact Airbnb. Well, I, I contact Airbnb about the noise. I've never called the police. I've threatened to call the police. They usually what I have to do to get the noise turned down. And I usually get a canned answers like, well, it's quiet hours from ten to six. Otherwise the noise, there's nothing they can do about the noise. And I don't know if there's regulations for decibels or if it's just from ten from seven AM to ten PM at night, you could have as much noise as you want. And have music or screaming and yelling. I don't know what rules are if that, if there's a requirement. Do people call the police during the day and complain about loud parties say at noon? Can they shut those down? Well, that's good to know.
What, what was it nodding my head?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I just get this canned answer every time I've complained.
Okay.
No, like quiet hours are from ten to seven. And so just put up with it. Well, I, I mean, what, what does that, is that a problem with a city other residents? Does that arise with the police department during the day? People, can they complain about parties? Have them turn the noise down? Does that happen?
I'm not sure how to answer that. Um, I, I find it hard to believe you couldn't call the police department and complain about it. We have nuisance ordinances that I would think cover noise and
Okay.
dogs barking and
Well, I, my dogs bark too, and I've had to sedate them. Collar's off because there's hordes of people, not hordes, but there's strangers running around in the back of the fence line and there's noise and there was that tarp wrestling all the time and the gurgling from the pool house. My dogs bark, but, um, since then I've sedated them. So bark less. Um,
Mr. Mayor. If, if I may.
Yes.
Um, we, we do have a nor, noise ordinance that as you noted, um, uh, primarily deals with, uh, loud noise in the evening hours. Uh, I am not sure off the top of my head if there's verbiage as part of that noise ordinance that addresses um, um, excessive noise during the daytime. Uh, but it's certainly something that I can look into for you.
Last, last year, it's a weekend Saturday, the pool house boombox went on from Saturday morning afternoon into the evening into the night. And then it started again Sunday morning and it went on all day. And finally I went over there and knocked on the door to ask them to turn the noise down. And, uh, shirtless beer drinking guy answered the door. So I got nowhere with that. So I don't go over there. I don't ask anybody anymore to turn them noise down because it's not going to happen. So it's good to know that there's an ordinance. The other thing is when I contacted the host through Airbnb, I get the same canned answer. It's quiet hours. And then it's a children's birthday party and you're running the children's birthday party and you should just put up with it.
Did you contact the, the manager or did you contact the owner?
I contacted the manager, but I have talked to the owner too. So I just I don't get any
Okay.
any feedback on that. Um, and I do have complaints about traffic. So for example, this weekend, the big toy hauler trailer that got hosed up in our cul-de-sac. Unfortunately, our homeowner is able to move my car so he could get his big trailer out of the cul-de-sac. I think if I'd not been home, he would have maybe hit my car. I'm not sure if he came in close. The other thing I want to say, the one last thing is he has no works for BPA and he hires, tries to hire electrical engineers and they come here and they look at the housing situation and they say, never mind. He, he did hire an engineer about a month ago. He took the job. Came here a week later, looked at the housing situation and said, never mind. So I think this Airbnb thing is making the housing situation worse. There are people that would move here and take family wage jobs with families, but there's the housing situation is not good. The other thing is, can we do a moratorium on new Airbnbs in that neighborhood?
That's something the staff's going to be looking at. Well, yeah. Okay. Counsel Richardson, did you have a question or comment? I thought you were motioning to me.
Put on the clock, Mr. Mayor. We got a lot of business still to do.
Thank you.
We are definitely, I want you to understand, we've heard you, it, government doesn't move that quickly, but, but it does move.
Has no word.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Gomez, come forward, please. Nice shirt, sir.
My wife picked it up. Seems to be the popular color this season, doesn't it?
Don't start that clock yet.
So clock, clocks aren't working.
Oh, yeah.
It's very difficult to see.
Oh, I didn't know. I thought it was broken or something. Okay. You, the clock doesn't start until you start talking.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chuck Gomez. I am the co-owner of the Granada Theater along with my wife, Deborah. And we have been here not quite ten years from our initial research into the Granada, but have been a strong member of the community for now going on eight years. And we are very happy to be part of this community and we consider it, I consider it my adopted hometown. It's all how you look at things. And I didn't bring any written notes. As you know, I'm in the kind of, in the entertainment business. So I brought a recorded note from a radio station that I had, uh, that was playing about a week ago. And, uh, it's quite important, give a listen to it, bear with it and I'll, um, I'll, I'll define it a little, a little further after we hear these two minutes of radio show.
I say you're under the menu twenty seven. We are going to the Dolls in Oregon for our live stage show. Sure are. And I put that up now. How you doing?
Hi, Tom. Great to be on Coast to Coast tonight.
Well, we are looking forward to coming here. We have a good time here. I'd like to give us a background on your theater and just talk a few of the shows that have been there. I understand it's a really cool state there.
Well, you know, it's the first theater built and designed west of the Mississippi for the Talkies back in nineteen twenty nine. And Judy Garland came here and Gab Callaway and Louis Armstrong. And lately it's been, uh, the Gatlin Brothers and Billy Bob Thornton and Quiet Riot. We have a little, a little bit of everything here at the historic Granada Theater.
Amazing. Tell me and tell us a little bit about the vibe of the city. People are telling you, I've never been there. George has never been there and
It, it's a wonderful little community and it, it's really going through a rebirth as uh, the art in the community is exploding. It's the city of murals. We have close to forty outdoor murals. The Granada itself has two of the largest indoor murals in the state. We're right off the Columbia River. There's live music everywhere, historic buildings in a walking tour. I hope a lot of people fall in love with the Dells when they come to the show with George. We're just an inch away. In fact, I thought we were sold out and the fire marshal has made a, an exception and has, uh, counted our seats and has opened up another fifty seats for us. So, uh, folks, if you want tickets, you better call because they are literally flying out the door. The phone is ringing nonstop for this live stage show that's coming in.
And Chuck, last thing before you go to the color, real quick.
We do.
And then they go on and ask about what, what we're serving then night and everything. The importance of that, uh, little radio program is that is the number one late night radio show for the last thirty years. Thirty years, number one show. That particular night, I did the demographics from the, uh, radio stations. That particular night, their listening audience was a tad over thirty million people. Thirty million people. Now you ask, how do you advertise a community? Do you do local radio? Do you do local subscriptions in newspapers? Or is it word of mouth? When you are reaching thirty million people in one night, that is far reaching. This program has over two hundred and thirty one million listeners a month. And we have been on that program since December. What is that? Six months now? Every day, every couple of days, uh, I was interviewed on that radio show. Uh, many times it's the host that does the interview himself. And if we want a community to grow and if we want it to stay strong, uh, we want tourism, I believe, to come into our community. And it's not just, oh, well, let's just do some community, uh, interests and some folks that come. We really have to shoulder up uh, responsible advertising and the Granada Theater has really stepped forward. Thirty million people in one night heard what a beautiful little community we have here. The Granada Theater needs to be, uh, first and foremost on the council's agenda and on the council's lips and their minds, uh, on the chambers, on other peoples. And I see I've run out of time already, but we have a military, uh, dedication that night. We have a gentleman's flag from Iwo Jima and Okinawa. And uh, I think if you check all our hotel records, you'll find just about every hotel has now been sold out for that weekend. So I wanted to make it available and make it known to the city council that the Granada is working hard to reach out to literally every state in the union right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gomez, what, uh, what's the date on that?
It's May twenty seventh.
Thank you.
This Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you everyone for your time and attention. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council for up to five minutes? Last call. Okay. On we go. Uh, city managers report, Mr. Klebs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me get back to my little cheat sheet here. Um, we, uh, conducted, uh, several interviews for various city positions over the last few weeks. Uh, we have offers out for the economic development officer and the facility supervisor. And so we are, uh, very positive on that front and hope to finalize things soon. Uh, we have also been selected for the next step in the AmeriCorps RARE process. And so working closely with, uh, community development director Josh Chandler on that front, as well as coordinating with some of our partners on the various projects that we have for that potential rare, including Lisa from the chamber. Um, I also attended the urban renewal meeting last week, I think is what it was. Time flies. Um, and so there's a lot of different exciting projects coming down the pipeline, and I'm sure some of the councillors may speak to some of those. Um, and, uh, also went on a, um, ride along with some of our police officers last Friday night. Uh, patrol officer call, who was a very professional, excellent officer. And it's just a great opportunity to be able to ride along with some of our officers and really see what they have to deal with on a day to day basis. And, uh, also wanted to remind the council that this coming Thursday, there is, um, thinking essence, a reintroduction of the Dow's Main Street program. Uh, they'll be hosting a, uh, a meeting at, um, uh, the Gorge Wine Library at five thirty this Thursday. Sherry Stewart, the Oregon Main Street State Coordinator will be in attendance uh, to unveil and, and reintroduce some of the work that they've been doing, um, and the, the new structure of the program. Um, so if there's interest in attending that, please feel free. And then finally, uh, we're working with some of our local stakeholders and partners here to organize, um, essentially a site visit in July uh, with some congressional field staff to talk about the various, um, congressionally directed spending requests that have come from the community, um, notably for the council and for the city. Uh, we submitted a CDS request, uh, for the airport, uh, to support the EDA and skill, uh, skills, uh, training hangar, um, partnership with CGCC. But there's been a number of different projects submitted by different organizations in our community, including the college and uh, the Port of the Dows, Wasco County and several others. And so I'll keep the council informed as to that site visit in July. And, uh, be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Klebs? The Main Street is at five thirty? I was told it was at five. At five.
Not five fifteen. Thank you for that correction.
All right. I didn't get it right either. Okay. Council reports will start to my left with Council Richardson.
So much, so, so much to report. Um, I'll keep it very brief though. We have, um, some exciting projects at Urban Renewal. I don't want to steal the, uh, committee chair's thunder, but, um, I would say anybody who's interested in sort of downtown developments and prosperity might keep an eye on Urban Renewal over the next, uh, two or three, four months. Um, we did, uh, some senior staff evaluations, our city attorney, judge and um, manager recently. And I think I think that's it for right now.
Counsel Randall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May twelfth, uh, the Climate Resiliency Committee met for its final meeting. Uh, we dissolved after, in accordance with our one year charter, following the presentation to the county and the city recommendations. On May eighteenth, Q Life Budget Committee met and we recommended approval of the twenty twenty three, twenty four budget to the regular committee. And on May nineteenth, also participated in the annual evaluations of the senior staff. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel along.
Uh, in the last two weeks, I basically attended the, um, senior staff, um, reviews and also answered a few emails and phone calls from constituents around the, um, short term rentals.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
On May sixteenth, uh, I attended the urban development meeting at five thirty. Uh, airport commission meeting on Friday at seven thirty. Staff evaluations Friday at eleven o'clock. Uh, I've been working on shopping cart solutions with our city attorney and mayor. And I have been investigating short term rental complaints and forwarding my, my, uh, data to the city manager's office. That's it.
As far as my report goes, um, on March, excuse me, May, uh, ninth, I, May tenth, I attended, um, Mid Columbia Medical Center's Nurses Week Celebration and gave awards to two of the nurses who were, uh, one nurse, um, nurse of the year award at Mid Columbia. and gave awards to two of the nurses who were one nurse, Nurse of the Year Award at Mid-Columbia Medical Center. And I appreciate the work of our city clerk to make all the necessary arrangements and give the awards out. So thank you, Isetta, for all you did. May thirteenth, I attended the Civic's one-hundredth anniversary at the Civic. May fifteenth, I gave a presentation at the Dallas High School for Senior Decision Day. I was on KODL with our police chief on May sixteenth. On Saturday, I attended the new food bank facility grand opening. And I also, that same evening, attended the Dallas Athletic Hall of Fame Awards Banquet at the old Watanaka High School that went back as far as nineteen twenty to give an award to the nineteen twenty state championship football team, among other awards that were given. That was the oldest. And it was really an enjoyable event. And like I said, they're gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna happen on an annual basis from here on. So that's it. Okay. Next is the Consent Agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the more important items and issues. Any councilor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the Action Items section. There's only one item on the tonight's consent agenda, and that's the approval of the May eighth City Council Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll second that.
It's been moved by Council Long and seconded by Council McGlaughlin to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten A has been taken out, and so we're at item ten B, which is the annual chip seal program authorization. Director Public Works is with us tonight. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council. You want to start the clock for me?
We start the clock, yes. Yeah, you beat me to it, didn't you?
In recent years, the Public Works Department's utilized chip sealing as a fairly cost-effective treatment for maintenance on its city streets. It's a treatment that we can undertake without tripping federal requirements to upgrade sidewalk ramps when the work is being done. We also follow up the chip seal with the application of a fog seal. That's done a few weeks after the initial chip seal. Helps lock the rock from the chip seal into place and extend that surface treatment by several years. This year's effort will be undertaken, like we have in the past, in partnership with Wasco County. Wasco County has the equipment to do chip seals that the city does not have. We also combined our purchase of the chip seal oil with Wasco County's purchase for their projects this year to get the best pricing available to us. This year, we'll be doing about twenty-eight, well, we will be doing twenty-eight different street sections scattered throughout the city for a total of about four-point-two miles of streets to be treated. The list of those streets is available on the city's webpage under the Transportation Division. The, excuse me, in the staff report, I provided a breakdown of the individual costs, including chip seal oil, chip seal rock, the Wasco County labor, and allowance to tow vehicles if we encounter the need to do so on streets. Usually if that occurs, it's because we encounter an inoperable vehicle that the property owner isn't able to move themselves. So we engage the services of a towing company to get it out of the way and work with the property owner and where that ends up going. And then the cost for the fog seal oil, which will be applied a few weeks later. We do reach out to the communities, residents along these routes in advance of doing the work so that they know the work's being done and the vehicles can be moved. Our total cost for the project this year is estimated to be a hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Within the street fund, we actually have four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars budgeted, so there are adequate funds available for the project. And with that, it's staff's recommendation that the city council move to authorize the expenditure for the two thousand twenty-three chip seal project in an amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Questions for Mr. Anderson?
I have one. I have one.
To Richardson.
Director Anderson, what's the expected life of a chip sealed, fog sealed, street mile?
It depends a little bit on how much traffic the street receives. But we usually are looking for somewhere in that five to seven-year timeframe for a chip seal on a, and we can only apply the chip seal on the surfaces that are already in fairly good shape, and we just seal the cracks ahead of it, surface that's already really heavily broken up or got a lot of settling as an appropriate candidate for a chip seal.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Looking for a motion?
Mayor Mays, I can go ahead and do that. I move to authorize the expenditure for the two thousand twenty-three chip seal project in the amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Council McGlaughlin and seconded by Councilor Randall to authorize the expenditures for the two thousand twenty-three chip seal project. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Still have time, too.
You still got twenty. I can't read those numbers. They're too small.
Restart the clock.
On the agenda. Authorization, whoops. Resolution. Authorizing transfers of funds. Ms. Wilson?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. You have before you my Agenda Staff Report, twenty-three dash zero one four, authorizing transfers of budget amounts between categories of various funds of the city of the Dallas adopted budget, making appropriations and authorizing expenditures for this fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Resolution twenty-three dash zero one four transfers fifty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars from the contingency line item to cover the following items. Twenty thousand is needed to compensate the police department. Some additional overtime is needed due to staffing issues. Twenty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars is needed to, for the debt services in the other department of the general fund. Due to the transitioning of Gatsby eighty-seven, the city's required to recognize a lease liability, and it's stated as debt services, which was not budgeted for. Five thousand is needed for the IT department to add some additional VIBA payout. Our IT manager retired, and the city policy allows money to be transferred into VIBA for a portion of sick time. And lastly, the transfer of eighty-nine hundred from the airport contingency line item to the airport department for the increase in the property tax line item for additional taxes that was inadvertently left out of the budget. And Resolution twenty-three dash zero one four would not impact the total budget for the general fund or the airport fund.
Any questions for Ms. Wilson? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll do that. Mr. Mayor, I'd move to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash zero one four, authorizing transfers of budgeted amounts between categories of various funds of the city of the Dallas adopted budget, making appropriations and authorizing expenditures for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilor Richardson and seconded by Councilor Long to adopt the resolution authorizing the transfers of funds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We've come to item twelve adjournment. Does anybody, before we adjourn, have anything they want to raise for the good of the order? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Record. Record.